Thank you for waiting for us. We had a closed session when a few minutes over. I'd like to call to order the February 27th, 2017 City Council Successor Agency to redevelop an agency meeting here. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight, gentlemen or staff?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes from the dais? All right. Move on to report from closed session, Mr. Robins.
There's no report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Presentation. We have a presentation tonight on our pilot robotic delivery service, which we had had once before. I guess we have an update, so... Gentlemen?
Hello, everyone. My name is Henry Harris-Burland. I look after marketing and communications for Starship Technologies, this little delivery robot which is coming down to the front of the hall right now. And it's great to be back. I was presenting here three or four months ago now, so thank you very much. And I wanted to give a little bit of a recap, and also I was going to hand over to Justin, our head of Silicon Valley operations, who's looking after our Redwood City project, to say a couple of words about what we're doing in Redwood City, but also what we'd love to do in San Carlos. And we're here today because we'd love to have these robots doing some testing on sidewalks of San Carlos. I'm also joined by Jeff Leacock from Greenberg-Troy from our Public Affairs. So again, thank you very much for having us here. So for the people that haven't seen this little robot before, this is the world's first delivery robot. It delivers parcels, groceries, and food, and it travels on sidewalks at safe and slow speeds of around about four miles an hour. Now, we aim in the long run for this robot to drive 99% autonomously, and this is really important to us. We don't want a 100% totally self-driving robot here. We actually always want the human touch. We always want an element of human oversight and human control. So we're aiming for 99%, but we're not quite there yet. Now, the robot is inherently safe. It's got very sophisticated obstacle detection systems. Obviously, we don't want it bumping into things, otherwise it's not going to work very well. And we've done tens of thousands of miles across over 50 cities, and we haven't had a single incident yet. Safety is absolutely a massive priority for us. Now, one really interesting thing with this robot, we found through our testing, not just in Redwood City, but many cities around the world, is a lot of people actually ignore this robot. They may look at it when they're walking down the sidewalk, and then they just get on with their day. They may look back at their mobile phone, or they just don't really care. And we thought, I mean personally, I thought, wow, I wanted people to be crowding around this robot and taking pictures and things like that. But the reality is, if this robot works efficiently in a neighborhood or doing local deliveries, it needs to blend in. It needs to be seamless around us. And we've found from our testing, it does exactly that. So the robot itself, what's the point of it? Why is it actually here? What benefits can we bring to a city like San Carlos? Well, e-commerce is growing at around about 10% every single year. This means there's more deliveries, which quite simply means more vans and more cars on the road. And lots of cities, not just San Carlos, have congestion problems and pollution problems. Now, we are looking to solve real social and economic problems by using these zero emissions electric devices. And we actually want to increase convenience for the local residents of San Carlos by offering this brand-new technology. Now, in the long run, we want to offer this service, this robotic local delivery service, for around about a dollar on demand. So we actually want to offer this to all the local businesses that may not be able to offer delivery right now because it's too expensive. Delivery is very inefficient and very expensive, not just for local businesses, but also for big businesses. This robot can solve a lot of these problems by reducing the cost, and that's our aim in the long run. Now, delivery to me is a hassle. When I'm ordering things online, I'm thinking, am I going to be at home? This is a problem to me. We want to solve all these problems for local residents. We want delivery to be a seamless process that just happens around us. We don't even really want to think about it. And that's our aim with this robot. Now, now is probably a good time to introduce Justin. He's been looking after our Redwood City program, and he would hopefully be looking after our San Carlos program, and he's been with the company a little while. So I'd like to introduce Justin to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in Redwood, and also what we'd love to do here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Henry. Appreciate it. I'm going to practice using this clicker. There we go. I'll go back. Great, yes. So we are extremely excited to have announced the fact that a little over a month ago, we've launched here in the Bay Area, in the heart of Silicon Valley, over in Redwood City. We are also operating in Washington, D.C. with our amazing partners, DoorDash and Postmates, doing on-demand food delivery. And so we've received very, very warm welcomes from the local residents and generated fantastic PR on the local level, national, and even international levels. And, you know, so much so that, you know, even during Valentine's Day, as we were making our normal rounds, a couple, you know, little children ran up to the robot and gave us a couple roses. They're big fans of the robot. A lot of kids are inspired about robotics. When they see it, they ask questions. Parents love it. And so it's just been a great time thus far. And so, you know, with DoorDash and Postmates, for example, we're able to do all types of food deliveries for a local two-mile radius of the downtown area. And so it's really great for local businesses and restaurants, as you can imagine. And we've made it a major point for us to become embedded with the local community. We've joined the downtown business group as well and regularly attend local events, such as, for example, last week, the Startup Grind Global Conference, which took place in downtown Redwood City, you know, speaking to Realtor groups about, you know, for innovations happening in the city, for prospective residents and whatnot. We're aggressively creating jobs in the hyper-local area. We hire locally, and we already have a team of over 10 employees. Our goal is to bring it up to over 100 in the Bay Area. To date, we have not had a single incident, no vandalism, theft, accidents, nothing. Safety has been a part of our DNA from day one, and we can speak to the specifics of the robot at a later time. But, you know, what really makes us excited, and it's certainly an honor to be here today, is the opportunity to have an ideal city kind of like San Carlos, to be able to launch our robotic delivery services. Obviously, there's a lovely downtown area over here on Laurel with plenty of vibrant restaurants and a very diverse community, so it would be a perfect fit for us. You know, we'd certainly love to partake in the lively local community events, such as the Hometown Days Parade, which will be coming up in a couple of months, Farmer's Market, Art and Wine Fair, things like that. And of course, we make it a big deal to join local business groups, particularly like, for example, with the Chamber of Commerce, and be able to engage with, develop relationships with, and stay plugged in to what's going on in city ground, and be able to also meet with local community leaders and business leaders. Ideally, we'd like to have, you know, our pilot program have a fleet of about 25 robots serving the 30,000 residents here in San Carlos. You know, working through our partners of Postmates and DoorDash, we'll be able to bring, you know, your local favorites from Laurel Street, such as Three Pigs BBQ, which I personally love, and Lou Lou's, and so many more. You know, as we expand outward and build more partnerships, we'll be able to bring more than just food delivery, but also grocery delivery, parcel delivery, things of that nature. So ultimately, our request is to essentially gain the approval of a pilot program to be able to operate here on the sidewalks of San Carlos and be able to bring the unique opportunity of on-demand, 24/7 robotic delivery service to the residents and the local businesses here in San Carlos. So I'd like to, on behalf of Henry and my team, we'd like to thank you for your time and would love to answer any questions. And afterwards, we'd love to take questions out in the lobby as well, if anyone from the audience would like to come up and ask some questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Henry. Questions, gentlemen? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. First question, how much does that weigh?
It's about 40 pounds.
About 40 pounds.
Yeah.
And you said you haven't had any vandalism or theft or anything like that?
Zero incidents so far. We've done about 20,000 to 23,000 miles.
If somebody did steal it, would you know where it was?
Yeah, so we do have many theft prevention measures. So we haven't had an incident yet, but when there's, say, thousands of robots around the world, not just in the city of San Carlos or Redwood City, obviously, the chances increase. And it's not impossible to steal. People are still stealing cars, and people are still stealing bikes. So we do have theft prevention measures. We've got nine cameras around the front and back, which can be recorded if it detects an incident. We've got alarms if you pick it up, so it's going to be quite embarrassing running down the street with a screaming robot. The lid's locked during a delivery, so you can't actually get inside. It's very difficult to try and break into it. The most importantly, as you said, is tracked to the nearest inch. So we have tracking to the nearest inch, which is then backed up by GPS tracking as well. So we're going to know exactly where you are. And if you did steal it, if someone was silly enough to steal it, they may get some milk and eggs or something like that, so it really wouldn't be worth a hassle.
And you said there's a lot of cameras. I imagine they're picture...
Nine cameras around the front and back, yeah.
So you'd have a photograph of the person?
Yeah, or video, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. ... Excuse me. Johnson.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for staff. Oh, thank you guys for the presentation. I was under the impression that we had approved a pilot program, so is there something formal that we need to do, or is this just an informational update?
Well, it's informational in nature, but actually, at the first meeting, the council asked for additional information to come back. Redwood City was getting very close to starting, and that's kind of where we left it. So the direction we'd be looking for from council tonight would be to get the council to ask us to agendize a pilot program agreement that we'd work out and then bring back to you as soon as it's ready to go.
Okay. For one, I'm supportive of that. Any other comments? If not, I'm certainly in agree with Mr. Johnson to have it brought back.
Count me in.
That's three. I don't know of the other gentleman. Any comments? Any? Okay. None of the comments? So gentlemen, we'll have staff agendize it. You work with them from now on, and we'll screw it up, and then we'll see you again in a period of time, hopefully sooner rather than later. Can't believe it's going to be 87 pages, right, Mr. Robins?
We'll try for 84.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be out in the lobby if anyone has any questions as well. Thank you very much.
If you are out there and you do have some discussion, if you could just close the doors, then, because I have a feeling that at least the young people would like to go out there. You already seen it? Okay, good. Super. Thank you again for coming by, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and these are for persons wishing to address the city council for items not on the posted agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more, well, we won't go into that because there's going to be more five speaker cards, but we have enough time tonight, I think, to let everyone talk. If the item is not listed, please advise the council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. But the city's council, the city council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have them added to our future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action report and formal public discussion and input at that time. So I have a number of speaker cards. What I will do is try to read two names at once, so that the first person can come up and speak, and then the second person will be right behind them. The first name I have is Ron Piovson, I believe. I'm sorry. I apologize, Ron, for probably butchering your name again. And followed by Jenny Dope... Right. That's exactly what I was going to say. Sorry?
What's the spelling?
I can't.
Yeah, I'll just copy.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Before I make a few words, I'd like to actually read a poem that is inscribed on a plaque at the Statue of Liberty. "Not like the brazen giant of Greek flame, With conquering limbs astride from land to land, Here at our sun-washed sunset gates Shall stand a mighty woman with a torch, Whose flame is an imprisoned lightning, And her name, Mother of Exiles. From her beacon-hand glows worldwide welcome, Her name, her mild eyes command, The air-bridge harbor that twin cities frame, Keep ancient lands. Your storied pomp cries she with silent lips, Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. The wretched refuse of your teeming shore, Send these, the homeless tempests toast to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." I read that because what I and a number of my friends and neighbors here are asking the council to do is for the city of San Carlos to uphold the promise made in those words at that great statue. So with that, we would like to submit to the council for review. We have a petition signed by a number of our friends and neighbors, some of whom are here, that will ask that for San Carlos declare itself a welcoming city and reaffirm our city's, our community's commitment to freedom and diversity, to foster open dialogue within our community, focusing on the rights, freedoms, and dignity of all individuals, protecting city resources from being spent on illegal and immoral actions, such as mass deportations and/or ethnic and religious registries, and to set an example for our children, that we are not just a city of good living, but the city of good people. So, and we have some proposed language we'd like to submit as well.
Great. Thank you, Ron. Please give that to the city clerk, if you would.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi to everyone here tonight. Hi, thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for everyone who came out in support of what I think is a very important issue. I am relatively new to the city of San Carlos. I bought a home here about two years ago, and I can really relate to that poem because it wasn't so long ago that my family, who were refugees coming from what was then Russia, came to the United States to build a better life. I suppose at the time, they were undocumented, and they worked in factories. And with every generation, we're toward that dream. Today, just looking at what is happening in the country, all the injustice, and all the sort of unwelcome signs that we're giving to people, it has real impact, you know, across the country, but also here in our small community. And the thought, you know, to me as a parent and as someone who works with many people from all over the world, that anyone would be scared or fearful for their lives because they live here or work here is unthinkable. And so I ask the city to please do all that you can to protect people who are here so that we can have a fair and just community that really supports our goal of a city of good living. I know that's what brought me here, and I'm sure that it will bring many others and keep them here, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, very much. The next speaker is David Legori, followed by Michelle Chang.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a second-generation American. My father was born in Brooklyn in the mid-'30s, and when he grew up at that time, late '30s, early '40s, he was part of a wave of Italian immigrants at that time. And like all new immigrants that come here, they started at the bottom of the ladder, and they were taken advantage of. They were abused. They were stepped on. They were mistreated. And they were used as scapegoats for problems that they didn't create. The very same things are happening now with our neighbors to the south. However, the Italians, just like the Polish and the Chinese and other wave of immigrants have, as they've assimilated over two or three generations, provided immeasurable value to our communities and our country as a whole. I can say with great relief now that I can walk down the street in any town in America and people don't point at me and say, why is that Italian in our neighborhood? All right? And the same thing will happen for the new immigrants. It's important to keep in mind that there's one reason and one reason only why these people are here, and they're willing to risk their lives and leave everything behind, is because they want to work, and they want to make something themselves, and they want opportunity, and that's not something that they have where they come from. As a 15-year resident of San Carlos, as well as a business owner in the construction industry, I've worked with, alongside with, and among and employed people of very legal status, and I can assure you that they are in fact here to work and to work hard, and they provide an immeasurable economic benefit, not just to San Carlos and the Bay Area, but to the entire country. And the truth is, if we don't already know this, we're economically dependent on this workforce, and if they were to disappear overnight, California would just fall off a cliff. That is the truth. So it's for these reasons and others that I would like to urge the city council to consider this resolution and designate San Carlos as a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michelle Chang, followed by Julie Davidson.
Hi.
Hi.
I love San Carlos. I moved here in 2002. We moved here about after we got married. We were all, you know, idealistic, and we still are. We're still married.
That's good. That's good, you still married. If your husband enjoys that, too.
So we raised our kids here. They've gone through White Oak School. They're now at Arroyo School and Central Middle School. I've been on more PTAs, driven more field trips, and sold more Girl Scout cookies, and I care to admit. But I love my community. I love Hometown Days. I love our youth center. I love all the services we provide for all of our residents. My daughter's class just made Valentines for the fire department, the police department, and some other nonprofits, thanking them for serving and protecting us. However, when I... What protects me as I go about my day, walking down the sidewalk, running errands in San Carlos, is not the police department. What protects me from racism, sexism, and all forms of bigotry is not our wonderful police force, but a fragile fabric of human, basic human decency, respect, and tolerance. So I urge you to consider strengthening this fabric by taking a stand for tolerance. I would love to see support to make San Carlos a welcoming city. As JFK said, "Tolerance implies no lack of commitment to one's own beliefs. Rather, it condemns the oppression and persecution of others." So thank you for considering this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Julie Davidson, followed by Natasha Melly.
Good evening. My name is Julie Davidson, and I am a teacher in San Carlos at Trinity Preschool. I just want to express my support for making San Carlos a welcoming city. I believe we value living and working in this town because we value the community and the many diverse people and cultures that make up its social fabric. Making San Carlos a welcoming city is one way to take a stand against racism, bigotry, and hate in all of its forms, which have no place in our country, and certainly not in the city where we strive together to raise loving families. With this resolution, we can clearly and formally reject policies that will divide us and ultimately make us a less secure community. I strongly encourage the council to take this opportunity to make San Carlos an inclusive and safe place for all of our neighbors. In this way, we can uphold the lofty ideals and democratic values upon which this great nation was built. The well-known, often quoted African proverb states that it takes a village to raise a child, and you have the opportunity to shape this village into a place of inclusion and love. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Natasha Melly, followed by Cheryl Munoz Bergman.
Hi, I'm Natasha, and I'm not going to be quite as eloquent as Julie, but I did want to say a few words. I've been a resident of San Carlos for over three years. I'm raising my kids here, part of the school system here, and part of the reason we've moved to California and the Bay Area and specifically is because of the diversity of nations of origin and religious affiliation, and it's a great place to raise kids, to be exposed to all of that, and my kids do enjoy that. We have friends from all over with different beliefs, which I think is really important, and it scares me. I didn't think six months ago I would even be standing here asking for something like this because it just seemed like it was inherent, but I feel after what's come about, we do need to have some sort of statement to say that we are a welcoming city and that our friends and neighbors that might be targeted should feel safe here, regardless of their documented status. They are a big part of our community. I have Muslim friends. I have Hispanic friends, and they shouldn't be walking down the street feeling like they are targeted just because of the color of their skin or how they look. So I would like the council to consider this resolution and the support that we all here give it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cheryl Munoz Bergman, followed by Danielle Lacapagna? Got that one right. That's one. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Cheryl Munoz Bergman. I'm the director of programs with a nonprofit organization called the International Institute of the Bay Area. We are a nonprofit that provides immigration legal services. I work in our Redwood City office down the street from here, and I live in Redwood City as well. And I'm here also to speak in support of this resolution to create a more welcoming, to have a public statement about being a welcoming community because it makes a big difference for immigrant families who live here. In San Mateo County, one-third of our residents are foreign-born. In San Carlos, it's slightly less, at 19%, but that's still one in five individuals who are foreign-born in this town. And the new executive orders put out by the new administration in these last several weeks are creating a sense of fear and terror throughout immigrant communities. And these new policies threaten to tear apart families and deport individuals without giving them an opportunity to exercise their due process rights, or to go before an immigration judge to see if they have a case that would give them the ability to stay and seek refuge in this country. Many of our local towns and the county itself have put forth public resolutions in support of the rich diversity that immigrants, refugees, and people of all faiths and nationalities bring to our communities. And an important component of these local resolutions and policies are limiting the ability of ICE, the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, to access local resources as they pursue family separation and deportation. So I would strongly encourage the San Carlos City Council to consider passing such a resolution and limiting the ability for ICE to access local resources in this way, including the collaboration that is currently going forward with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, where they're doing warm handoffs of individuals to ICE practically on a daily basis. They recently reported they did this 21 times in the month of January, so encouraging them to stop this practice would be a really positive statement to support the safety of our families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Daniella, followed by Rob Anson. Rob Anson, I mean, sir.
Good evening. I came here in November, November 28th, and spoke about hoping that you all would consider a statement in light of the times. So I'm here again, and my public speaking is terrible, so it's a good practice. So, you know, since I saw you last, it feels like I've been watching a really bad, long B-movie that you can't turn off because it's dangerous to do so. But I want to talk about the good things since I came here. I've met a lot of people, some of them are in this room, that have been mobilizing and, you know, embracing this movement, and we together have gone on things, like we've been on political organizing calls, gone to town halls together, we've gone to the airport at the protest. So you have a lot of constituents that are hoping, hoping you will make us proud. And we've gotten wind of other cities who are trying to do something similar, so we're hoping that you, you will do so as well and come forward with a statement and a clear statement of welcoming. And just one thing I saw on Twitter that moved me, and it was just some random guy who tweeted, "Remember sitting in history and thinking, if I was alive then, I would have..." You're alive now. We're alive now, and whatever we're doing now is what you would have done. So I'm really hoping to get something forward from you guys and hoping to hear back from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi.
Go ahead, Rob.
My name is Rob Anson. That was very well done. Danielle's my wife, so I have to support her.
Excellent.
I would have anyway. That was really...
Good career, Rob. Well done.
I do feel somewhat unprepared. I appreciate the eloquence of folks who spoke before me. What I've been thinking about is a sense of big events happening in the world, and I think a limited capacity to affect those events. And I think our community has an opportunity to send a message that's greater than any individual can, and I think that message... I do feel somewhat unprepared. I appreciate the eloquence of folks who spoke before me. What I've been thinking about is a sense of big events happening in the world and I think a limited capacity to affect those events. And I think our community has an opportunity to send a message that's greater than any individual can. And I think that message for me involves a sense of justice and a sense of what's right and what's fair for people. And I think San Carlos has represented for me a community that is very closely knit and supportive of each other, and I think the declaration of San Carlos being a sanctuary city would be a step towards the community... Excuse me, for the community to assert on even a national level that that's what our values are, and to have some degree of impact on the nature of our political times. So I would definitely ask the council to consider San Carlos being a sanctuary city. That would be pretty meaningful, I think. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Laura Palmer Loehn, followed by Ford Hinajosa Kirshendam.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening and your service to the city of San Carlos. I woke up on November 9th to my youngest son, telling me that he hated America. I've never felt that way, and I want to show him that America is not what it appears that it could be, that is actually the thing that we all pledged allegiance to at the very beginning of the meeting. And might I remind you that, that said, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." The welcoming city provision would show that we are living the value that we speak to when we open this meeting every night. My family is a rainbow family, and we came into this community not sure what we would find, but worked very hard to start contributing right away and build the community that we wanted to be a part of. And I hope that the city council allows this provision to move forward to the next step so that we can all be proud of the city that we want to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ford, I'm not going to try that a second time. I think I did pretty good the first time, followed by Viviana Alkazar.
Okay, I'd like to also thank the ability to come here and voice my thoughts about this as well. So I'm a San Carlos resident. I've been here for about four and a half years now, and my kids have gone to Trinity and to Charalinda. I'm concerned about the effects of our federal government on our local community. I'm also Jewish and wanted to support our Muslim and undocumented neighbors from being fearful of deportation or from not being required to place their name on a registry. I'm concerned about minorities being scapegoated and placed on a list. My grandparents escaped from the Holocaust and were thankfully welcomed to the U.S. They were protected, but their entire family stayed behind, and they were... They didn't survive. Hopefully, that's not the case here, but psychologically, being placed on a list is really not good for local residents. So I support San Carlos to become a sanctuary city, to protect all of our local citizens, as many of our local cities have already supported. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Viviana Alkazar, followed by Graham Prost.
Well, thank you so much for considering this proposal to make San Carlos a safe and welcoming environment. I also want to welcome everyone who has been tonight here. I'm Hispanic. I'm an immigrant. I lived in the Bay Area for 20 years. I was actually born in the U.S., but then moved back to Mexico and was raised there. My family has been here for three generations, back and forth, so I represent, in a lot of ways, the communities that you are here supporting tonight. So thank you so much. Although I do consider myself quite a privileged person because I'm highly educated, I have a professional job, I'm a U.S. citizen, I have plenty of friends and families, family members, and people that I interact with on a daily basis when I go and get my coffee, when I go to the post office, who are not as privileged as I am because they are undocumented and they're quite scared about the future. I live in San Carlos... I have lived in San Carlos for a year, but as I mentioned earlier, I've lived in the Bay Area for almost 20 years, and I definitely feel targeted on a daily basis. So I want to thank you for doing this, and I definitely want to urge you to support this proposal to make San Carlos a welcoming and safe city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Graham Prost.
Thanks for giving me a chance to talk. I also wanted to express my support for making San Carlos a welcoming city. I've been here for about three years, since I got out of grad school. I'm a solar engineer, but I spent last summer teaching physics to underrepresented high school students of color. And a lot of the students that I worked with, well, the students were all citizens as far as I know, but a lot of them had family members who were undocumented. And now, I've been keeping in touch with them and watching them go through the college application process, and these students are dealing with an amazing amount of stuff just in terms of their academics and extracurriculars and everything. It's quite amazing to me, what a lot of them are doing. I went to Stanford, and I didn't do half as much stuff as these kids are doing, and they really don't need additional things to be worried about with their parents or other family members facing deportation. So, yeah, based on that experience, I just wanted to express my support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight on this item? Go ahead. And later, would you fill out a form and give it to the city clerk? That's all right. Just later on, you can do it. Go ahead.
I just wanted to express my support for the resolution and that this would be just a small part of more steps that we could take to work with other communities. I know that we can't declare ourselves a sanctuary city because of the situation with not having our own dedicated police, but I wanted to ask, where can I learn more about that specifically? And escalating this movement to other... The larger umbrella of, you know, sanctuary city-making San Mateo County, of sanctuary county... I guess this is a strange place to ask, but where do I find more information about that?
You might want to ask them here. There are speakers that are here tonight. In fact, they would know a lot more. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, please continue.
No, that was really all I wanted to say was just, I wanted to come to show my support, so you asked if anyone else wanted to support.
All right. Thank you for your comments. If there's another hand, please come up. And again, if you could, later on, if you could just grab a piece of paper in the back and then give it to the city clerk, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Just for the record, nothing... No other reason.
Well, thank you for your time. My name is Deiraj Karpelani. I'm a resident of San Carlos. I've been here for seven years. I just wanted to express my support for this welcoming city resolution. My parents, my family, have been refugees and immigrants, and I've benefited from the experience of them start coming to this country, working hard, and building a better life so that I could become a physician in this community. So I think that everyone should have that opportunity, and I would like to express my support for that.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Is there someone... Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
I would just also like to express support for this resolution and to thank all the people who've spoken so eloquently to make this a welcoming city and a sanctuary city.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. As I said earlier, we do not act on these, but we perhaps can refer things to staff. Is there any comments from the deists?
Yep.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I think what I heard a number of people call for is a request that we agendize a discussion that would, perhaps at a later venue, lead to some actions depending upon that discussion, but to agendize the topic at a future meeting. And I would certainly support doing that.
Mr. Collins?
I do as well.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I do. And if I might, if I may, just respond to the earlier speaker. There are a couple of things I want to say. I want to appreciate... Give my appreciation for everyone coming out. I do want to make everyone aware that we have a later agenda item tonight for our strategic plan. In the past, as part of our strategic plan, we have eight core values of the city. We agreed at our strategic retreat to add a ninth value that says that San Carlos is a safe, diverse, and welcoming community. And so that's something that we're going to be taking action on later tonight. You know, the speaker asked about, you know, how can I learn more information? And as was mentioned, we don't have a police force. We have law enforcement in San Carlos, but it's contracted through the sheriff's office. The policies around interaction with the immigration services, ICE, occur in our county jail. And so those are policies that are governed by the Board of Supervisors and the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. And so I encourage everyone to kind of, as you continue to learn about those things, to talk to the sheriff's office and talk to the supervisor's office as well, because I think they're going to be... They have policies, I think, that you will find are consistent with the values that you were expressing tonight, but I think they're also going to be looking at them in the future in light of what's been going on in the country.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I should have added this. I too would like to thank everybody who spoke tonight. Those of you who thought you didn't speak sufficiently eloquently, I always think, "L.G., I wish I could talk like that." So, really, and my heartfelt thanks to the folks among you who helped organize this, particularly Ron, who's sitting here. Not to diminish anybody else's role at all, but you really do represent and demonstrate exactly how great San Carlos is, and thank you for doing that. Thank you very much.
Okay. So staff, you have direction. I too concur that we should put this on the agenda, so we can put something together and check with other cities, see what they're doing, and we can see what we're going to decide to do here. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we also potentially, when staff... When the item comes back, could we ask to perhaps have somebody from the sheriff's office here?
If that's possible, to have either Chief Rattus or Sheriff Balaanis or whoever. That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for all the folks that spoke tonight. We'll be going on to other items. You don't have to stay, but if you are going to leave, why don't you do it right now? Then we'll start in about 30 seconds or another. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming and being involved.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item number seven. Approval of Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything? All right. I know that on H, there was a difference of vote, and I guess, as evident by last time, we don't have to pull it, per se. We'll just have the city clerk record the vote if people would like to have the same vote that they had last time, or they can just approve it, whatever they want to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve consent items A through J and adopt ordinance 1519. In order, so the city council, the city of San Carlos repealing existing San Mateo County... Or, excuse me, repealing the existing San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, and replacing it with a new San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36. Elections consolidating the city's general election with the statewide election.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocat?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes, except I would like my rejection of item H to be noted.
Noted. And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Did you want yours? Okay. Okay, that's fine. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along. Item 8A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorized in the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce to operate a year-round farmers' market in downtown San Carlos on Sunday, subject to annual approval of a special event permit. Mr. Suvay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Members of the city council, as you know, hot harvest nights used to be on Thursday evenings in downtown San Carlos, and in late 2015, the Chamber of Commerce proposed a year-round farmers' market on Sundays from 10:00 to 2:00. And in February 2016, the council authorized a resolution for a pilot project to allow for a special permit for the chamber to have the farmers' market on Sundays for one year. And they kicked that off in June of this year, June 6, 2016. And so we've been about nine months into the farmers' market downtown, and what's before you this evening is a resolution for your consideration to allow for this program to continue in perpetuity. However, it would be essentially a yearly basis, and the chamber, every year, would come to the city to ask for a special event permit, so it would be making it a permanent event. And here to discuss this in more detail is Dave Burchard from the chamber.
Welcome, Dave. We'll give you more than two minutes.
Thank you.
You can say how much.
You can say how much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Dave Burchard, CEO of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to report on what we consider to be a successful first year of the San Carlos Farmers Market, Sunday Market, that, as I'll mention previously, began the first Sunday in June. Let's see here. Okay. So the new Sunday Farmers Market opened last year on June 5th, as was mentioned, following 12 years of operation... Operating as a seasonal Thursday night market. At the time, we were experiencing some concerns over parking. There were also, in terms of attendance, a lot of folks that weren't able to make it on a Thursday night for one reason or another, and going to a year-round Sunday weekend just made a lot of sense to try out at the time. But essentially, in doing that, we created a whole new market, as was mentioned. We were on a Thursday night, and when you, you know, when you stop one and start another, it's like starting a whole, a whole new market. Typically, markets, when they get started, they take about two to three years to become established. So we worked really hard in our first year to advertise, promote, and create a market that folks were feeling, felt welcome to attend. But you still, no matter what we do, we're still learning about that, no matter what we do to promote the market, there's still some residents here in town locally even that weekly say to us that they didn't even know that we were here. So we're finding that to be the case, week in and week out, still. But that being said, we still had an average of 1,000 to 2,000 folks come through during the winter months and 3,000 to 4,000 in the summer and fall months, many of whom come to shop for fresh food year-round. We experienced smaller markets and fewer vendors during the last two months in particular, primarily due to the extreme weather conditions that we are all familiar with, the amount of rain that we've had, and in many cases, that rain would tend to fall on the weekends when our market was held. So it was primarily due to the poor weather conditions and secondarily because of available crops during the winter months. Nonetheless, the variety of winter crops is extensive, and shoppers are able to find what they want. Under normal conditions, there are a few bullet points there with some of the crops that are available during the winter months. That said, many farmers lost their... Some of their products due to the rain, and at least a half a dozen of our vendors haven't been able to come to the market for that reason. However, the market will continue to grow over the coming weeks and will be full again from April through December. So because we knew that this would be what was essentially a new market, the chamber invested heavily in additional marketing and advertising over what we require or what we need, thought we needed to do for the Thursday night farmers' market, including extensive advertising and promotion through the Daily Journal, the pilot newsletter which covers the Redwood Shores community, Climate Magazine covering Redwood City and San Carlos, the Cross Street banner, the A-frame signs that you see on some of the heavily trafficked intersections in town. The city also assisted with some e-notify notifications to the residents who are a part of that system as well. as well as newsletter and the recreation guide that goes out to all the residents. In addition to that, we did a lot of advertising through social media. And what we found is, not unlike the Thursday night farmers' market, the Sunday Farmers Market was also a good opportunity for residents to meet face-to-face with local elected officials and for elected officials to hear directly from their constituents. City Council members were out there, along with city departments, on a consistent basis throughout the last several months. I think it was a really good opportunity, and I hope many of you saw that as being worth your time and efforts. We're also finding the farmers' market to be a great gathering place for local residents and others from throughout the surrounding area. Most come to downtown San Carlos for the market, but they also stay for the restaurants and shopping and enjoying some of the live music that we provide as well. And it's all at a leisurely pace, because they can come and spend the morning without having to rush and feel like they have to get home or get the kids to sporting events and that kind of thing. Parking has not been an issue necessarily with the Sunday Farmers Market, and many families have come either on foot or riding their bicycles. We've also looked at the Sunday Farmers Market as an opportunity to stage other events for the community, either during or after the market, to take advantage of the population that's already down there. A couple of examples of this were the city's safety fair that happened in early October. We had a holiday wine stroll in December that attracted about 500 people. That was immediately following the farmers' market. And we also worked with Society Skate Shop on an event that they wanted to put on to show skateboard demonstrations. And it's also an opportunity for local service clubs to work together on projects to benefit the community. In December, the Lions and the Qantas Clubs joined together on a canned food drive, toy drive, all around the holidays, and also provided photo opportunities with Santa Claus. So they had a built-in audience, but we also took advantage of our advertising to bring more folks down to the market, to take advantage of this opportunity. The Farmers Market provides a venue for showcasing local organizations and school groups, such as the San Carlos Children's Theater, who benefit greatly from this added exposure. We even worked with Clock Tower Music and some of the parents of teenage rock and roll bands that featured a rock and roll showcase, which attracted a large number of kids and their parents for an hours-long free concert in the Harrington Park utilizing the stage that's there. And also, the Farmers Market sponsors and vendors that we work with throughout the course of the year benefit from their participation each week, building awareness of their products and services. Several local businesses, including Devil's Canyon Brewing Company and Domenical Winery, are regular vendors, and they sample and sell their products on-site. And they're finding that their brands are growing in popularity because of their participation in the Farmers Market. In downtown, with all the construction that's happening currently, currently underway, including the Wheeler Plaza and the Transit Village, it's really important that people know that San Carlos is open for business. And the Farmers Market is one way, and events like the Farmers Market are a way to keep people coming to our downtown, driving foot traffic to the businesses and merchants in the downtown area. So with that, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my question, actually, nice presentation, Dave, thank you. I think my question may be more for staff. It was prompted by something that Dave said about the society skateboard demonstration. I just want to make sure I understand, from a public policy point of view, when we close the street for, to give the public access to something that they wouldn't normally have, I can see the public benefit associated with that. Closing the street for the one particular vendor seems somehow different to me. And I just want to make sure that that's copacetic and actually consistent with what the plan was, the concept was behind this approval. Does that make sense? Or does the question make sense?
I think I understand. And I think the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
It is consistent with the Farmers Market as opposed to, I mean, one business could put in an application, an event permit, that we would consider, but, you know, it would have to be, you know, we would have to see a community-wide benefit, you know, if one, you know, restaurant or something wanted to have, host a really large, you know, community event downtown, and they were, you know, offering free food to the community or something, we would certainly consider that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your explanation.
In the case of the society, we coordinated with them, but they had to go through that special event permit to get permission to do that. And it basically closed Cherry Street West, and that's, in the past, the, I think Parks and Rec Foundation had the Ferris wheel there. So it's not done regularly. It's, you know, it's a one-off, but it's something that, you know, it's something that happens. It can't happen.
I have no problem with society having done that. I just wanted to make sure that from a policy and legal point of view, they thought of doing that. And I appreciate Jeff reminding me that actually, any business at any time could make the application. We'd evaluated as to whether it was appropriate.
And I know in the past, too, the Reading Bug has also requested, you know, permission to have a large vehicle in front of their store or something when they have a special event at their building as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, that reminds me of a second question. May I? Thank you. I had heard from several of the, a few smaller store owners that there was concern, I gather, over the loss of parking in terms of how it impacted their business. And the question I guess I had is, to the extent that that was actually an issue, does the city have the ability to, I don't know, like, for the duration of the event, to designate a certain number of spaces in like the Bi and Kinney, when I think of as the Bi and Kinney Lot, I forget its public name, to be dedicated to a, you know, particular set of businesses? So that they basically have a lost parking capacity that's on the street? I'm not saying we should do that, I was just curious.
I mean, I suppose, since the question was, do we have the authority to do that? Yeah, I would say that you have the authority to do that. From a practical standpoint, it would probably be difficult to administer. Because you'd kind of have to be tracking where everybody was going once they got out of their car.
Have you heard that also, Dave?
And, you know, we'll work with the merchants as much as we can, to the extent that we have the ability to do so, to accommodate whatever, if they're in a special event or something like that.
Let me leave it, as you hear stuff, I'd like to coordinate with you, just to make sure I understand what the full picture is.
Sure.
Thanks.
Other questions? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I guess I will entertain a motion then. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017-.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce to operate a year-round farmers' market in downtown San Carlos on Sundays, subject to annual approval of a special event permit.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Just one, I want to thank Dave and everybody at the Chamber and the Board for a fantastic job. You know, we always have ideal conditions, particularly this winter, but it's been well done. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gocott?
So I guess I'll go ahead and vote for this. I don't want this to come off as so adamant, but I did want to explain publicly, since I talked to the city clerk about it when she sent me this schedule. But, you know, the council members routinely attend the event and work the council booth. And I don't go to that because it's on Sunday. And I don't do that because on Sunday, that's my time to go to church and then have time with my family in the afternoon and so forth. And it's loathsome to me to be spending Sundays doing council things if I can at all avoid it, so that's why I'm not there. And I just wanted you to know that, and I wanted to let the community know that.
Okay. My comments are a little different. I'm going to not support this item. I think the Farmers Market's a great idea. I think Sunday's a great idea, but I don't think it works in the winter. I was down there on Sunday, and granted, it was a little, well, it was sunny, but, and I know, as Dave said, the winter's been harsh. There weren't 30 vendors. Let's rephrase that. There weren't 30 farmers. There were barely half of the items were produce. There were a lot of other things, ice cream and kettle corn and a bunch of other stuff. You know, to me, a farmers' market is a farmers' market. And in the winter, it's tough to get crops, believe it or not, unless you import them. And I just, I don't know, I know that, certainly, I don't want to move it back to Thursday, don't get me wrong. And I think overall, it's a great idea, but I just think it should be in a, at the end of the fall, in the end of October, stop and start again in April. So I, because, and there weren't, unfortunately, again, the sun was out, but again, because of the winter, there just wasn't that many people. Granted, it's been a harsh winter. That's okay, Dave, you can sit down.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you have the vote, so I wouldn't push it. But, no, I just, and again, I talked to Dave about this, just to be, make sure everybody knows how, I spoke to him about it and had concerns. And again, the council wants to do this, and that's fine. Believe me, I'm certainly not going to boycott in any way, and I will be there when I need to be. But anyway, I just, I'm just not sure that it's the thing we need to do. Go ahead.
As a discussion, actually, hearing your comments convinces me that I should vote against this and join you, if, just to send a signal. And it's not because of my position of what I already shared about Sunday and what I do on Sundays, because that's personal. However, your comment about the winter and the crops and so forth, I've noticed the same thing when I walk through there. And yet, I've never liked it on Thursdays, because, on the other hand, you talk about weather. In the summer, we typically get the fog.
And wind.
And the wind, and it comes in, and I've been down there on Thursday nights doing, you know, what we're supposed to do as council members. And it's awful. It's cold, and it's windy and so forth. So I guess if anything, you know, I think Saturday and part of the year, as you're saying, would probably be a better idea. I understand the idea of going year-round, but I do, I, I don't know, my, you know, it's not scientific, but my view of it, being down there on Sundays, because I go down, you know, my Sunday routine is to go to the plantation, get my cup of coffee, and then get in the car and drive to church. So I see the guys there setting up and so forth, and it does look like it's been weakened. And you might be right, it might just be the hard winter, the rain, the crops, and that sort of thing. Other winters might be different, but I'm going to support the mayor's position, and at least, you know, you're going to have the vote, but at least sends the message that it's something to be thought about.
Mr. Collins, your comment?
Just a question for staff. We can always revisit this, can we not?
I believe it requires an annual renewal of the permit and whatnot, yeah. So seeing other comments, let's call the question here, and Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
No. Okay, pass them to there. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is item 8B, consideration of adopting resolution approving modifications to the sidewalk repair program based on the zone concept and directing staff to submit a request in mid-year budget to fund a full-time maintenance worker and equipment to perform zone inspections and temporary sidewalk repairs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'll be introducing the item for you. And again, the primary interest we have for council tonight is to understand what we're proposing to be the components of our new sidewalk repair program. To be able to do the majority of those, we don't need a budget amendment. And so if council decided, they can defer the decision for any kind of budget amendment for resources until the budget time, and that's what we're recommending with our resolution as well. So tonight, Grace Lee, City Engineer, will do the presentation, and then Grace and I'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Grace, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Grace Lee, City Engineer. The California Streets and Highways Code, Chapter 22, and San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 12.04, place maintenance responsibility of damaged sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the adjacent property owner. The city does have a program to help property owners with the repair. It is complaint-driven, which means the city gets a sidewalk defect complaint, the city inspector goes out, inspects the sidewalk, and notifies the property owner. The property owner can choose to hire contractors, obtain permits and do the repair, or opt into a city program. The city's program is to reduce, the goal is to reduce the liability for the city and also the property owner. The threshold of repair is based on the Americans with Disabilities Act guideline of any displacement vertical or horizontal of more than a quarter inch. Through the public bidding process, the city hires a contract to do the repair. The city also administers the contract, does the inspection, and all coordinations. Following the project completion, each property owner reimburses the city for the actual cost of the repair. In most cases, because the project is publicly bid, the price is a lot lower than what property owners can get on their own. Council directed staff to research best practices and standards. Staff looked at all the cities in San Mateo County and found that in all cities, but in almost all cities, the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk repair. None of the cities use a quarter of an inch as a repair threshold. About half of the cities use a citywide zone program, and I'll talk more about the zone program in the later slides. About half of the cities allow for temporary repairs. About half of the cities use paint to mark defects. Based on their research, staff is proposing a sidewalk repair program that is proactive and has a zone approach, meaning that the city is divided into up to 10 zones, and each year, we'll work on a zone. So year one, we'll do Zone 1, and then sequentially throughout the city until the entire city's covered. Then we'll cycle back to Zone 1. Within the zone, the priority repairs are based on proximity to sensitive areas, and that's parks, senior centers, public buildings, schools. And the repair threshold will be increased from a quarter of an inch to three-quarters of an inch. This would mean that our standard will not be in compliance with the ADA guidelines, but it will be more in line with other city standards. And we will no longer mark defects with orange paint. As an option to the program, council can choose to fund a new full-time maintenance worker and new maintenance equipment. The maintenance worker will inspect sidewalks in designated zones, perform temporary repairs on defects identified that are not within the current year's zone, provide continued maintenance on the temporary repairs until the permanent repairs are performed as part of the zone program. The temporary repairs will address interim trip hazards and reduce liability for the city and the property owner. The program does not modify the municipal code, which means property owners will still be responsible for sidewalk repair. And the property owners will be responsible for paying for the permanent repairs as part of the zone program. The permanent repair costs will likely be less, because the threshold for repair has been, the threshold has been changed, increased from a quarter inch to three-quarters of an inch. The systematic zone approach provides predictability to the property owners. They'll be able to get a estimate of cost in advance and also a repair timeline. And with the maintenance worker option, the city covers the cost of the temporary repairs. The cost of a full-time maintenance worker and maintenance vehicle and sidewalk repair is $200,000 for fiscal year 2017-18, and $150,000 for subsequent years. The current sidewalk repair program budget is $300,000, with $240,000 budgeted to be reimbursed by the property owners. Tonight's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving modifications to the sidewalk repair program based on the zone concept, and directing staff to submit a request in the mid-year budget to fund a full-time maintenance worker and equipment to perform zone inspections and temporary sidewalk repair. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Grace. And Mr. Obert, and Mr. Gocott?
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Jay. Several questions here, but let me start with kind of the obvious one. Why is this being brought forward as an action item if it's basically just a conceptual thing that, in terms of the financial impact, is going to be deferred, decision is going to be deferred until the budget?
I can answer that for you, Grace.
Sorry, the question's for staff.
Actually, you know, we kind of went back and forth about that. You know, we knew there was some urgency in terms of the council directive to get this back and forth. back in front of you, so from a policy standpoint, we wanted the council to be able to weigh in with their policy direction. But because, you know, we know that the council takes adding full-time staff very seriously, as you should, and we, you know, we encourage and applaud that at the staff level, and we're so close to the mid-cycle budget review on this, we didn't want you to have to consider adding a full-time employee in a vacuum. We thought you'd probably appreciate more being able to take a look at that particular component. There are certainly components of the program that you could put in place tonight that would go forward in terms of the one-quarter to three-quarter inch defect, and the no paint, and cosmetic defects, and those kinds of things. But we felt like it was a little bit unfair to council to ask you to make that kind of financial decision so close to taking a whole look at the budget.
That makes sense to me, with the caveat that I would have, if it were me, I think I would have just brought the financial aspects of this back during the budget process, and separated out the, let me call it, the purely policy aspects here, like the height difference. Because otherwise, you know, what ends up happening, and I have a somewhat different recollection about the priority sense that the council had, Jeff, of bringing the issue back, my recollection was the issue being brought back was supposed to, whatever else got brought back was supposed to include the notion of who pays for what. And that's not part of this. And I understand why it's not part of it, but that's why I expected both this and that to be part of the budget process. Because otherwise, what can end up happening is it can look like what we're trying to stage here is, I guess I'd call it kind of an in-run around the discussion of who ought to pay for things, because it's like, oh, well, we approved several hundred thousand dollars for this extra staff, and now we don't have the money to spend on this other stuff, so.
Right, and, you know, we talked about that at the staff level, too, and it, you know, basically wasn't, you know, the, what we thought we heard from staff was basically, go forward and take a look at the best practices. And we had gotten information, Ken Castle tonight did a very good job of providing us with a lot of information about research he'd done in other communities. So really, that was our approach, and since we didn't find that that was very common, wasn't a best practice in other cities, that didn't make our staff recommendation. But we wanted to highlight it tonight, because certainly it was, you know, we had one council member who, you know, yourself, who definitely brought that issue forward, which just simply wasn't something that we were recommending, but it's highlighted in the report, there's information and attachments related to that. So if we get direction again, I would certainly encourage the council to take the approach of, you know, giving staff direction that, if that's the direction you want to go, that you'd like to see that as part of the mid-cycle review, so that it could be incorporated into the next fiscal year's program, if that's the way the council wants to go.
Sorry, I wanted to clear, to see what, as part of the direction for what to be part of the next cycle review.
Either adding a staff position, or who pays for what, and how much, in terms of us making a city contribution in the future, if that's something that...
I very distinctly specifically remember at our strategic planning meeting, the council agreeing to say that we would, not what we were going to do, but we would consider the question of who pays for what as part of the next budget cycle. It doesn't need further direction. That was part of the direction already given to staff.
I don't recall that, but I take your word for it.
And actually, one of your comments there is kind of a good lead into my next question, which is, I want to make sure I understand more the basis or the impetus behind changing to an inspection-based program as opposed to a report-based program. And I understand the differences, I think, between them, but one could argue that the report-based, or complaint-based, sorry, complaint-based program had worked for the community for quite a few years, at least for some level of work. And so what was it that wasn't working that staff felt we should move in this direction?
I think, as everyone knows, what's been happening lately, or what was happening, was we've been, we've been, we've been, the program has been driven by one or a few people that are submitting a lot of complaints, and that, that sort of drove our program to a point where we were needing to have a different strategy. And so going to a zone program, it's more predictable, it's easier for staff, because we know exactly where we're going next year. And we'll be inspecting for next year. And it's a very systematic program, that it's easier to administer, it's predictable to property owners, it makes sense, and we have more control, city has more control, rather than it being influenced by complaints.
And would I assume, Grace, that part of, one of the downsides of the complaint-based program is, you know, if we get, as we did, a flood of complaints in one part of town, we could choose to say, well, we're only going to deal with a certain percentage of those, but there's an increased risk to the city if somebody has reported a problem and we haven't begun acting on it. So if we control the entire inspection process, that problem goes away.
Right. It's a matter of, if you're saying your program is more complaint-driven, then you would have to chase those complaints. But if you're saying that you're a zone program, that's our policy, then you're not required to move your program, you can stick to your program.
Okay. And last item is not a question, but just an observation. While I very much appreciate staff's review of best practices in other communities about who pays for what, it reminded me very much of the old joke about the guy who gets pulled over for a speeding ticket in the wilds of Arizona, and the judge says, looks at him and says, Son, you're in trouble. How much money do you have? And the man says, Uh, only a couple hundred bucks, Your Honor. And he says, Well, I have the most amazing coincidence to report to you. Your fine is a couple hundred bucks. So, you know, we have to remember here that if the question comes down to, does it come out of city coffers or private coffers, given the choice, the vast majority of cities are inherently going to vote for, or move in the direction of, have it come out of somebody else's coffers. It's a way of raising funds. So again, appreciate it, but I view that a little bit in that light.
Okay. Mr. Grokot, followed by Mr. Collins.
So just one question, and that is, would this new program, I guess we'd call it a program, right? Does it preempt the complaint process?
So the base, the basic program is a zone program, so as complaint comes in, since we're notified, we'll also notify the property owner, but we would not go any further. Now, if the full-time maintenance option comes into play, if the full-time maintenance person is funded, then we'll be able to have that person do temporary repairs when the complaint comes, and it's not within that zone. So as complaint comes in, it's in other zones, we want to protect and make sure, or we reduce our liability and the property owners. So we'll send this person out to make temporary repairs until the zone program can do permanent repairs.
So a follow-up question on that, the temporary repairs would look like what?
So there is a combination of temporary repairs you can do. You can cut, you can shave, you can grind, you can patch. So it would look like a patched side, it wouldn't be completely replacing the sidewalk panel. Depending on what the case may be, it can be a patch, an asphalt patch, a concrete patch. It can be a shaving or a cutting. The difference is cutting is more precise, different tools. Grinding is a bit rougher, so the appearance is a little different. So depending on, it really depends on what kind of equipment we invest in, and also the skill of our main, or the maintenance worker.
So it could be any combination of those that you mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you're talking about, you know, if there's a, you're raising the threshold from a quarter inch to a three-quarter inch, and you mentioned that, you know, I'm just giving you an example, let's say there's a half-inch crack. Is that a vertical crack, or is it a horizontal crack? Or is it both?
Yes, it's both. It's any vertical or horizontal displacement. So since we're raising it to three-quarters, we would not be, we would not be addressing the half-inch.
All right. So when you talk about the temporary repairs, would those temporary fixes address a quarter-inch crack or a half-inch crack?
So we, staff thought about this, and we want to be consistent with our, with our standard throughout, so even for temporary repairs, we'd be addressing the ones that are three-quarters of an inch. So, and that's so that when the permanent repair comes around, the homeowner is not surprised that, oh, temporary repairs, you guys fixed, there's a different fix. Like, how come the, how come you're either fixing more for the temporary repairs, or you're fixing less? If we have different standards for the permanent repair versus the temporary. So we want to keep the same standard, three-quarters of an inch.
Okay, so there's a half-inch crack, that there's not going to be a repair?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I have is, in the staff report, it says, under the analysis, the proposed program will follow a zone approach, and I get that. But then at the end, and you have to help me with this, I'm a little confused, it says if we choose not to appropriate full-time maintenance worker, we could still implement some of the program changes, and it says the program could be switched to a zone approach. Do you mean switch to this zone approach that you're proposing, or is there a different zone approach?
It's the same zone approach. So if there isn't funding for a full-time maintenance worker, the, really, the piece that will drop out is a temporary repair piece.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
I think the only question I have is, when, if this is passed this evening, when we start?
Well, we wouldn't have to, after the budget cycle, discuss about July 1st.
July 1st, okay. Just curious when we would go. Okay. Seeing no questions at the moment. Mr. Castle, you filled out a form, if you'd like to come up, please, and speak for a couple of minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I agree with Councilman Obert that this doesn't quite address what you had talked about in your study session, because it doesn't get to the heart of the issue, which is who pays for it. This state law is a bad law, when it's applied as putting the responsibility 100% on the adjacent property owner, because there's a presumption of guilt that, in my opinion, would never be upheld by a constitutional challenge by the Supreme Court. What it does is it lets a lot of cities off the hook by making the homeowner responsible for everything. Trees, I mean, why stop there? Why not have the homeowner responsible for the streets in front of their house? Why not have us responsible for the light bulbs in the city lights? The same principle applies. This is not area that I control, it's not area that the residents control, why should they be responsible for 100% of the cost? There are a lot of people in my neighborhood who feel the city should be doing 100% of this. And when you look at having a position for $200,000, please keep in mind that we had an anonymous individual, a cyber troll, that basically took command of the city staff to make sure that every complaint was inspected. How many hours, how many man-hours did that take? And I'd like to do a bake-off between the amount of hours that inspector took to respond to these hundreds of complaints from this anonymous individual, versus what would be in place if we were to have some kind of regular zone approach and some kind of inspection. I think we need to look at that a little more carefully. But I think, you know, we just had a whole bunch of people in here earlier today asking you to make this town a sanctuary city in opposition to federal law, because it's a bad law. And I'm asking you to take the moral high ground on this and do what's right, what is morally right. I'd like to see more of this kind of attitude at the local government level. Let's do what's morally right. What's morally right is to share the cost. Frankly, I think the city could take the whole burden of repairing the sidewalks and take this out of this situation of creating this animosity among homeowners. There are so many exceptions to what causes sidewalk disrepair, that it's unfair for people to be charged if a truck drives up on the sidewalk and cracks your sidewalk. There are so many of these different kinds of situations. So to have a blanket statement by enacting the state law and say, you're responsible for everything, it just doesn't work that way, and the court cases have not held up. So I really think we need to get down to the nitty-gritty here. We have all kinds of programs. I'd rather pull back on some new capital, you know, instruction, improvement programs, such as, you know, maybe the, maybe we can hold off on the bicycle road across the freeway on Holly, and put more money into infrastructure. More people are concerned about that. Our roads are beat up. If we're concerned about sidewalks, if we're concerned about roads, let's look more carefully at improving and correcting the infrastructure issues that we've had, and let's make this equitable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Johnson. I just wanted to make one question of staff that was brought up by Ken, which is, could you update us on whether or not people can submit anonymous Public Works requests via the app?
No longer.
No longer?
Okay.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a motion.
Sure.
So...
Excuse me, to make sure, anyone else wishing to speak on this item, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I have a question.
Please come up. Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
My name is Norine Higgins, and my property was tagged with the orange paint. And I've now noticed that there is white paint in, I live in White Oaks, and there's the very creative white paint over a lot of sidewalks and driveways. And I'm curious to know, I've called Public Works and not gotten a response, but what is that about?
That's a great question, because quite honestly, I walked White Oaks a lot on Sunday, in fact, the last few Sundays, and I see this, a lot of the same, a lot of USA, and a lot of things, so could someone please respond to that? Thank you.
White paints are usually used by USA markings, underground service alert, so the white paints are to mark the boundaries, so that each utility company knows to go to that spot and know where the boundaries are to mark where they're underground.
I know what that is, Grace. I'm sorry, but it's all over White Oaks, so I don't understand that. I mean, literally, it's seemingly every other house, it seems like. There was lots and lots and lots of it. So I'm wondering, are we going to have a big project that I don't know, we don't know about going in?
There's a lot of utility companies working on fiber, so I'd have to check.
Perhaps we could, and I could give you some addresses or show you the neighborhoods where it is, so we could answer that lady's question and answer my question, too. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of it out there. They've got a lot of spray out, so maybe we could figure, find out, and maybe send somebody out, or whatever, I could give you some streets. Thank you. And we'll get back and then make sure, if we could get this lady's name, too, and so we get back to her. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, you have something?
Just through the chair, are these markings on the pavement, or are they on the sidewalks?
On the sidewalk.
It could be on the sidewalk or the pavement, depending on where you want the underground utility markings to be, alert to be.
Sidewalk, yeah.
So it could be both.
Yeah, it can be, but the ones I saw, too, the last few weeks, have been all on the sidewalk, so, anyway. Thank, I don't mean, I know we have nothing else to do but run out there, but please, it's all over the place. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion then, or...
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll describe the motion, then I'll make it, which is, so I'm not a supporter of the zone-based system, I like the current system that we have, but I do think the proposal of increasing the repair threshold to three-quarters of an inch and removing the use of orange paint are good ones, good improvements to the program. So I would like to make such a motion.
Okay, do you want to, how about a maintenance worker?
So, the maintenance worker, I think, is tied to the zone-based system, and that's why I, so, so basically, I moved to adopt resolution 2017 dash...
20.
20, making changes to the San Carlos sidewalk program, increasing the repair threshold to three-quarters of an inch, and removing the use of orange paint.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I don't hear a second, so...
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second? Discussion?
So I would like to offer a competing motion.
Okay.
So my competing motion is worded exactly the same as Cameron's, except that I would like to add, whereas, whereas sidewalks are a public and private benefit, that the city and the adjacent homeowner would share the cost of improvement.
Okay. That motion's on the floor, is there a second?
If I allowed a second, two things?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to caution on adding that one element, I know the intention is, I understand the intention, but we, that's not part of anything that's been in the staff report or on the agenda about sharing the cost of sidewalk repairs, and it also is a broader subject matter that...
It is in the staff report, it's an attachment.
Well, city managers, can I just take a quick look at the staff report?
Sure. Excuse me. Take your time. Do you have any music to play?
Take a commercial break.
Crystal? Crystal? Let's make sure that if we have these, you know, interludes, we have some music or something, okay? No, I don't think you'd want me to sing, then I'd empty out the building here, but, yeah.
Actually, I believe that is an obscure portion of the duties of the mayor.
I put little children to sleep sometimes when I sung, but, anyway. The Jeopardy song, or the Jeopardy song, you know.
I don't think I see the question that Councilmember Grootkot's bringing up unless I'm misunderstanding the intention of your motion. I still have a concern about that. But I was also going to say that since the, even Councilmember Johnson's change, we're going to have to redraft the resolution. So you can make a motion to approve a resolution tonight that is consistent with what is in your agenda, and then we can bring back a resolution at your next meeting. That'll be the formal resolution so that it includes the whereas and/or other comments that you want to make. But just the action item in the resolution, I just want to make sure it's consistent with how this is agendized. And the agenda talks about adopting a zoning, the zone concept with your budget for a full-time maintenance worker and equipment to perform zone inspections and temporary sidewalk repairs. That's why I was worried that we were going beyond that.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
I've never felt so hemmed in, but I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution as written in the staff report.
Okay, withdrawing your other motion?
I guess it's a third competing.
A third competing motion, okay, fine. That's right, we do, because I'm Robert. So that's fine. Okay, is there a second to that?
I have a second.
All right, so it's, we'll go three, two, one here, I guess. But assuming we pass, if one of them, if the third one passes, we don't get to two and one. Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor, discussion. Mr. Collins?
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad that we have a motion for this particular resolution, the way it's written, because I think this is an incremental step. I think we're moving in the right direction. Ken, I agree with everything you've said, except that I'm not sure we're there yet budget-wise. I think at some point we will be, and I think there is a way to get there. I want to be convinced that we're going to have it in the budget on an ongoing basis, a steady revenue stream, that we can make good on that and that we don't put the city into a position where we're committed to a program that when times get bad, we may not be able to, we may not be able to fulfill our commitment. And I was, I was actually concerned, and I was going to vote no against Cameron's motion, because I like the zone approach. I just didn't want that taken out. And I wanted to make sure that we, that we have some sort of order to it. And taking out the, the concept of allowing people to just make complaints anonymously is also a good step, and moving the orange paint is a good step. I think going to the zone approach makes, it has a lot of logic to it, and I like that. So I'm going to support the third one, which is basically the resolution as written.
Okay. Mr. Olbert, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote against this primarily because of two things. I don't, I actually like the idea of going to a zone approach. I think it addresses some of the problems that Ken and other people have brought up. But I am concerned about getting the cart before the horse. And to me, the first and bigger issue here is to address the issue of the unfairness of having the entire burden of the cost of repairing the sidewalks placed on property owners. I'm gratified, actually, to see that the staff report, I forgot to mention this, several times referred to managing and reducing the liability of both the property owner and the city, which is an acknowledgement, in case anybody needed to hear it, that the city actually is liable potentially. And therefore, I think ought to contribute some of the cost of keeping the liability down, namely the repairing of the sidewalks. Also, just mentioned briefly in passing, there is, there are millions and millions of dollars available for spending on this kind of program if we need to, far more than, as I recall, staff's last estimate was in normal times, which is what we planned for. There was something on the order of about, it was going to cost about $60,000 or $80,000 to pay for half of the, incrementally, to pay for half of the sidewalk repair costs, which I don't want to sound cavalier, but in a, in a multi-tens of millions dollar budget situation like we have, that's almost a rounding error. And for that matter, tonight, we're talking about adding something that's more expensive than that entire program. And, which is why I asked the questions about, why do we really need to do this since the earlier complaint-based system worked, worked well for many years? I understand staff's input on why they want to change it, that's fine. I just think we ought to address this all in the context of the budgetary process, but let's look at both issues at the same time so that we aren't faced with the, well, let's spend money on A rather than B. Let's put A and B against each other and decide what we want to spend money on, or say, let's spend money on both of them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Grootkot?
Thanks. You know, from my perspective, I ask the question of fundamentally, what was the issue here that we were trying to solve? And the way I understand it is, you know, several hundred families came home at the end of the day and saw orange paint on their sidewalks for very small, non-trip hazard cosmetic issues that were technically, according to the city code, things that needed to be repaired. But any reasonable person looked at it and said, "Why am I basically being kind of singled out in front of my own, all of my neighbors to say that, hey, I need to fix my sidewalk, and why do I need to do this in this, you know, very rapid way?" And I can totally understand and empathize about that. I think that the suggestion of not using orange paint and increasing the threshold to three quarters of an inch, which would have reduced a huge percentage of those issues, solves the vast majority of the problem that was brought to our attention. I don't think that this is a problem that needs a $200,000 solution. I think that this is a good incremental step that we can take effectively immediately with no budgetary impact, and we can see if that solves the majority of the concerns that were raised by our residents, and we can always adjust it in the future. But I would be concerned about, you know, substantial investment of public funds, about something that I think was largely a case in which staff was applying technical rules in a way in which didn't really meet the expectations or the real danger that was out there in the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Grootkot?
So I agree with Cameron that if we're going to spend $200,000, it can be better done sharing the repair of sidewalks rather than adding staff. I don't really think it's necessary. And my only other comment, not to be too glit, but if anyone has ever wondered, can you make a motion that you're going to vote against? Watch.
I've done it.
I love government, okay. All right, any other comments? All right, call for question then for number three, which is basically A, B in effect. Mr. Grootkot, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Please, roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, so that fails, so now it goes to number two. The second motion was.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Can we get just a final go-ahead from our city attorney on that?
What I was concerned about is when I was reading the resolution, it's, we have to kind of delete some items from it. So if the council feels comfortable in adopting the resolution tonight and trusting staff to modify the resolution for the mayor to sign, we can, we can do that tonight. The alternative is to pass the motion, and then we will just, as a formality, bring back a new resolution that will have what you acted on, and then you'll formally approve it on the consent calendar at the next meeting.
Whatever you said.
I just, I just like, for the record, I just want to have a clear reason. So if we're going to change it from what's presented before you, I will have to make sure that it's exactly consistent with what you want to do.
I understand. So the motion to approve the resolution would basically be as Councilmember Johnson described it, you know, but specifically removing any reference to the zoned approach. Wait, wait. We've heard of my comment, it's Matt's. It's Matt's number two. Matt won the tab.
Findings that suggested, I mean, you can explain it.
Oh, slow down. Who made the second motion?
I did.
Okay, go ahead. Then you speak.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
So the second motion was identical to Cameron's, only I was adding in the whereas, that whereas sidewalks are a public and private benefit, therefore, the cost should be shared between the city.
Yes, I misunderstood.
And the adjacent homeowner.
Great. Go ahead.
I think, just to be clear, like the, like the recommended full-time employee expenditure, which we weren't, it actually wasn't agendized to be approved tonight. The expenditure itself couldn't have been approved tonight for the full-time employee. So this expenditure couldn't be approved tonight. You'd be directing staff to include that in the budget.
Okay. All right, Mr. Collins, you have a question or a comment?
I think I'm clear now. I just wanted to make sure I understood which motion we were, is there going to vote on next, and not just Matt's?
For offensive purposes, it's, yeah, no zone and.
And shared cost between the city and homeowner.
All right, does everybody understand what we're doing here?
Pardon me, through the chair. I believe, I believe also it was no orange paint as well, was it?
Absolutely not, maybe Aqua Marine. But, okay. Any other comments? All right, Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
No. All right, so now we go to Mr. Johnson's motion. Right. Which is?
Which is, increases the threshold from one quarter inch to three quarters inch and prohibits the use of orange paint.
Okay, that's by itself. Okay. Is there a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, the question is, so it does not add staff?
No staff, no zoning system, complaint-based system as we have today.
Okay. Does everyone understand that motion? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
No. So that passes, has three to two. Is that right? Okay. You counted right? I'm sorry.
For a point of clarification, not on the motion, but a discussion that, the point that came up earlier, where Councilmember Olbert pointed out that the council had previously directed staff to bring back, as part of the budget process, an option for the council to consider funding some percentage of the residential repair cost. That seems to run counterintuitive to the vote that the council just took, so are we still, I'd look to you to, where are you at on this?
I don't see it, you have to explain why you think that's counterintuitive. What Cameron just did was, what Cameron's motion did was to essentially change policy about what determines what gets repaired.
Yes, but Matt's motion included that, and it failed.
Yes, but that doesn't, in my mind, there's a whole bunch of reasons why, I don't presume to know why it failed, but there's a whole bunch of reasons why it might have. I guess what you're asking is a slightly different question, which is, is the council offer, giving staff different guidance on bringing back the issue of who pays for it during the budget process?
Right. And hopefully you can see from my perspective why this seems like a mixed message, and I just, just want clarification as to what you want the staff to do.
I still personally like the issue brought back.
I don't, but there's three other people here.
I don't.
Nor do I.
So it'd be the same.
Not now, anyway.
Okay, just as FYI for future reference, to make sure that we don't have any confusion in the future about this stuff, I will make sure if we are not doing so, if staff is not doing so already, all of our strategic planning discussions will be recorded.
Fine, whatever. Okay, any other, this one's done, so we'll go to eight C, which is a consideration of adopting a resolution adopting the City of San Carlos strategic plan. Ms. Peterson?
Before you this evening, we have the 2017-18 strategic plan, and I apologize, I'm using the same format that was just shown you for the sidewalk program. Slightly different color, though. All right, so a little bit about the process. On January 20th, we met with the facilitators and council and the executive team to go over the strategic plan for the past year and all of the accomplishments that staff had made, and discuss the goals and objectives for this new strategic plan. The city's mission statement, vision statement, core values, and goals and objectives will review and updated as necessary. And then on February 9th, the executive team met with the facilitators to review the language that the council had suggested to the plan, and then to establish work plans for each objective that the council had set. And these were all based on the January 20th meeting. And then the executive team broke down the tasks into actions and assigned staff to each action and established target dates. The draft work plans are available in tables attached to the staff report. The mission statement, remain the same. The City of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. The vision statement was slightly changed, and you'll see that the changes are indicated here in yellow. San Carlos will continue to move with confidence into the future to become a desirable, vibrant, family, and business-friendly community, admired as a great place to live, learn, work, and play. The core values also were slightly changed, again, in yellow. In no particular order, the City of San Carlos values fiscal responsibility and sustainability, protecting the city's assets, resources, and infrastructure, strategic thinking and planning for the future, high ethical standards and care for the community, protecting our environment, community engagement and community building, a strong sense of community, a safe, diverse, and welcoming community, and support the well-being and development of city employees. The strategic goals, in alphabetical order, are as follows. Affordable housing, the city will encourage multifamily housing consistent with the general plan and mixed-use concepts along transit corridors. Infrastructure, the city will identify and plan for strategic infrastructure improvements and maintenance. Parking, the city will develop parking improvements for the downtown, South Laurel, and the Transit Center that consider the interests of businesses, residents, and the city. Public outreach, community engagement, and social media, the city will develop and enhance public outreach, community engagement, and social media tools and platforms to facilitate open communication and information sharing with the public. Public safety, the city will provide high-quality, stable, and cost-effective public safety services to the community. And finally, traffic and transit, the city will identify, plan, and complete strategic traffic improvements while encouraging more use of public transit and alternate modes of transportation. The objectives and the number of work-planted tasks under affordable housing, we will work to ensure that the city and the residents are informed about the affordable housing policy. We will build multifamily housing along transit corridors and close to the downtown core with mixed-use concepts spread throughout areas already zoned for this use. We will take a more active role regionally in encouraging and developing affordable housing. Under infrastructure, we will build consensus around what the city's infrastructure and maintenance priorities are. We will identify reliable sources of funding for infrastructure needs. We will maximize underutilized facilities and resources, and we will complete infrastructure projects. Under parking, we will develop and adopt a parking strategy for downtown, South Laurel, and the Transit Center. We will increase parking supply for downtown, South Laurel, and the Transit Center. We will develop wayfinding strategies so people know where to find parking. We will encourage programs, incentives, and other modes of transportation to reduce parking demand. Under public outreach, community engagement, and social media, we will encourage a more involved and knowledgeable community to build trust and confidence in the civic policy process and to build shared civic pride. We will also develop effective communications policies and utilize consistent, multipronged approaches to public outreach and engagement. Under public safety, we will continue to provide effective and efficient public safety services. We will evaluate options for managing increasing fire safety costs. We will evaluate options for managing increasing fire safety costs. We will improve public safety along San Carlos Avenue and Holly Street. And under traffic and transit, we will complete transportation projects. We will study and identify traffic mitigation improvements. We will improve, uh, public transit and encourage alternative modes of transportation. And finally, we will inform and educate the public about traffic options. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Peterson?
I see none, so, at this moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
With my compliments to staff for their hard work, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash-
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting the City of San Carlos Strategic Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gocott.
So, I wasn't able to, um, attend this particular meeting that developed this, but I wanted to, um, highlight something that I see as being a problem, and I'm not sure council will want to discuss it tonight or add it to this, uh, program here, the, essentially the guidelines for work to be done by staff for the next six months? Next year? But, as we grow and become more dense, there's, for instance, these, um, things about housing and increasing multifamily housing, one of the things I recognize that's happening is because, in part, I live in it. I live in the downtown, and, uh, all around where my home is are buildings going up, construction going on. And what I can see that's going to happen in the home that I live in is I'm gonna lose all sense of sunlight. Next door to me is gonna be a building because, uh, I'm in the, on my side of the street, it's mixed-use, uh, zoning, which means if the proposal has commercial involved, it means building to the sidewalk, and it means building to the property lines on the side. So you, you do a building like that, and you do it at 50 feet, and anything next door is going to lose all of its sunlight. And that wouldn't, you know, I'm in a, what's essentially a single-family home. Even if you had, uh, lived in an apartment next door, you'd suffer the same, and that's why, for instance, uh, the proposal that's gonna happen next door to me on, on the north side of where I live, on the north side of that project, the Magnolias, people came, these are people who rent, and they came to the planning commission meetings and tried to get adjustments to the project that's gonna be, uh, be between my home and the Magnolias, because they were concerned about looking out their windows and not being able to see the sky. Across the street from me is going to be a 50-foot-tall building, which means in the wintertime, when the sun is low in the sky, the sun that currently comes all the way through my home, from the living room all the way back to our bedrooms, won't happen anymore. That's not healthy. It's not healthy to live in a city that people do not get solar gain in their homes. And, uh, Bob, I'm not picking on you, but I recall that you had said at one of the meetings, and no, I'm, because you were just stating fact, that our zoning code doesn't protect solar. And I'm saying here tonight that it should. You know, having gone through architecture school for four years, one of the things that they teach you is the importance of the sun on buildings, what it means if the sun is on the, shining on the entrance side of a building, or if you have an entrance facing north. Home Depot, for instance, and, or, excuse me, Costco in Redwood City went through a total renovation of their building to move the entry from being on the side of the building it was to being on a, on a solar-exposed, sun-exposed side of the building. Why? Because it matters to people when you walk in and out of a building, whether you're greeted by sunshine or you're not. So I just think it's an issue that we need to take up. I don't know if it needs to be in this particular document, but I do think it's something, before we get too built out and too dense, that it's something that we ought to, uh, take consideration of and somehow add, it would take some study, actually, to do it, but add those considerations to our, our zoning and our, um, you know, we have a document that shows form for single-family residences, who recommends, recommends, uh, form design. And it also, uh, addresses multifamily to some extent, although I don't think as much as it does the single-family. And for instance, one of the things that it says is that an entry, if you, if you remodel a house or build a new house, your entrance has to be on the front. Can't, you can't have, and yet, we have homes in San Carlos that have been there since the 50s with doorways that, entrances that face sideways. You know, you walk on the porch and the door's to the side, it's not to the front. But somebody thought, that's not, you know, that's not good enough. So if we can be that controlling on something like that, I think we need to be, have some control over design and the impacts design has upon solar exposure on neighbors.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other comments on this motion? Hearing that, is there anyone here wishing to speak on this?
I just haven't-
If you have, wanna speak, you need to come up, I'm sorry.
Um, I had a question about the housing initiatives to increase, uh, the amount of housing that was mentioned in the strategic plan. I was here two meetings ago, and there was a lot of talk about increasing, um, uh, preschool options, and, uh, so I'm just wondering if with the strategic attempt to increase housing, does that include within it the strategic attempt to increase, uh, childcare options, preschool options, any other, you know, necessities for the children that will populate those options? Is that included within the strategic plan, or is that something that needs to be added or considered, or, that was my question?
Good question. Staff?
Well, I think we've gotten direction from the City Council on their desire to, um, learn more about and develop a plan for, um, the preschool issue that was before us a couple weeks ago. The housing issue is different, it's already, we're already dealing with, um, state requirements and the city's, uh, housing element, which is part of our general plan, as well as, you know, ongoing, already-approved housing initiatives by the City Council. So, there certainly is a connection that the staff sees between those issues, they're not, there's not a formal linkage at this point.
But, Jeff, if I may, we are having, um, a proposal on how to essentially promote more preschools coming back before the City Council this year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any other comments? Seeing none, uh, call the question, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert? Mayor Goslin?
Yes. All right, moving on, item nine, council communications. Council's communications and announcements are brief items for members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community. Respondents, they have received their informational nature, and will be taken on these items at this meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark and I had an opportunity to meet with our friends from the community who worked effectively to get Line 61, this Line 61 bus up and running. They have some interesting ideas about improving, um, bus service to Sequoia High School, and they wanna make another run at Samtrans and make another proposal. We discussed that it might be good first to show our appreciation to the Samtrans Board for bringing Line 61 and doing so in an expeditious way and being creative and getting some funding for that. They wanted to go to a, a Samtrans Board meeting and to say thank you, to have some, you know, some, some things from the students, um, saying how much it's had a positive impact on their commute. And they suggested also that we might have a resolution from the City Council or a letter from the mayor, um, that simply said to Samtrans, uh, thanks for working with us, Line 61 has had a big impact on our community. And so we wanted to see if there were other members of the City Council who would be willing to, um, join us in putting forth such a resolution.
I would, Crystal, didn't I, didn't, wasn't there a letter that I signed or was going to sign on that? No. Another letter, okay. But otherwise, I would be, if it isn't personal.
Okay, great. We're planning on, uh, attending the first, uh, the Samtrans meeting in April, which is the first week of April, so anyone who would like to join us, please do.
If you could send out some information on day and date, that would be good if you would wanna go. Um, is that all you have, Mr. Johnson?
It is, thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, uh, uh, manning the, the, uh, city staff booth this past weekend at the farmer's market, but, which was a beautiful day, Mr. Mayor, actually, you should, you should've come down.
I was there, and I didn't see anyone there. Where were you?
I was there, I was there from about 10:55 to 1:15.
I must've been there after 1:15, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
Didn't see you.
I did wanna mention that several people came up to me and I, and expressed quite a bit of concern about the loss of parking spaces in front of town. And I've gotten a number of inquiries from, uh, residents as well, either by email or personal contact, uh, ranging from, gee, what's going on, to, uh, how did you guys lose your minds to agree to do something like that? Uh, I know from talking to staff that there are a couple of other applications, I believe, pending. My recommendation is that, that the council bring that matter back and discuss whether or not we in fact still want to continue with essentially expanding the program. I know we approved two, but only one has actually gone into effect now, and there seems to be a lot of agita about it. So, uh, that's my feedback, see if there's anybody else who feels that it's an issue we had to address.
I, I have gotten, and also, a lot of comment personally and through emails on that. Timing is everything. You know, originally, it was a great idea in my mind, it still is a great idea, but considering the fact that our parking is gonna be severely impacted by Ruda Plaza, I think the timing was unfortunate. So I might also wanna discuss that, well, when it comes back. I, I, I think the program's a great one, but I'm not sure that the timing is right to do any more of that, at least for a while, but that's just my opinion.
Just to be clear, my understanding is that if we don't ask staff to bring it back, it won't be coming back until after these current applications get evaluated.
That's correct. The council approved two.
Right.
Possibilities.
Possibilities.
Not, not the specific two. They created a process, they said up to two, here's the process, people can apply. So we had the, we had an application come in, got approved, met all the standards, now is built in front of town. We've got two more applications, only one of which could be approved by the staff under the current pilot program, and it will, one likely will, you know, they'll meet, come up with a design that will meet our standards, and it will get approved unless the council brings it back.
Yeah, I think, I think, personally, I think we oughta bring it back. I mean, it's unfortunate, I apologize to staff for, I'm sure, putting some hours in already on this, but personally, I think probably it should be, so there's two, anyone else wanna bring it back? There's just two of us. Okay, so, I'm gonna-
I'll, I'll add my voice.
I was gonna throw all my comments and questions to you guys, then.
I was gonna, I, the reason I hesitated, I wanted to hear Cameron weigh in on this, since he was one of the major advocates for it, so if he's willing to discuss it, I, I am as well.
Sure, okay. So, we can, if we could bring that back, I guess, Mr. City Manager? Again, apologize to staff for the-
Yeah, I'm pretty simple item to bring back. Particularly if it's written in the reverse, so.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Collins, any comments?
Uh, just briefly, the only, uh, meeting of significance that I attended was the Caltrain Electrification Meeting, it was actually the month that High-Speed Rail comes, and because, uh, as everyone may have read, there has been sort of a pause in the funding, $647 million, which is, I mean, the final component of one point, I think it's 1.98 billion to, uh, to complete the Caltrain Electrification Project. Basically, the funding is sort of, it's been put on hold pending the president's budget for next year. It's not that it's been canceled, there's just been a sort of a pause in it. There is a great concern that even a short delay will cause, um, more, much more expense in completing this. I got an email today that said that the, the contractors that Caltrain has been negotiating with have agreed to a one-month delay, um, and they're, um, implementing the, you know, the final stages, last couple of years of construction, but there's also a concern that, you know, that could add another, I think the number was $20 million in costs, so, we're just waiting to see, uh, what happens.
All right. Ms. Gocott?
Two, two comments, one, uh, taking off on the item that Cameron brought up about the buses and Sequoia High School District. Just a caution, because we had this come up when we were running Scoot, and that is that, um, any system that is deemed to be for students only or predominantly, you have to be careful of state law, which says if you're gonna have a bus and it's gonna be used by students predominantly or exclusively, it has to be a yellow bus, it has to have the lights and the whole thing. And there's good reason for that, it's a safety issue, so, um, just a cautionary note on that item. Then I had a question for staff, because at the last council meeting, I brought up the, uh, subject of Edgewood Road and contacting their public works department to find out what their plans are to do improvements to the hillside and, and, you know, do that project properly. And I haven't seen any emails or anything to us about that, so do we have any update?
I believe that's gonna be, the update's gonna be provided in the council newsletter, the next upcoming council newsletter, is that correct?
If I may?
Sure.
That's rather, you know, that's not a broadly, uh, it, it's, it's not broadly, um, it's not broadcast broadly, uh, the, the, the newsletter, it comes to council members, it doesn't go to the public. And I think this is a, an issue that is of public interest. Like I said before, the whole thing is, we have a good many of our residents who travel that road every day commuting, and it's a safety issue, and it should be addressed. And that's why I brought it up, and I'd like to see it addressed in a more public fashion than the council newsletter.
Well, I can actually, I'll give you the verbal update right now, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We've talked to the county, I've actually had this conversation, um, with high-ranking county officials on more than one occasion, as a daily Edgewood Road commuter myself. And the county doesn't have any plans for any major public works improvements to Edgewood Road. Their plan is to continue to do the maintenance program that they've got now, which is to, you know, kind of pre-dig areas and then have equipment on standby, uh, for the wet weather months when it comes down. But in terms of like, you know, the concrete retaining laws or things, particularly, you know, I think Highway 92 is the example in my mind that would make sense for Edgewood Road, if you were doing to do that type of project. It's not in any of the budgets or any of the, uh, outlining years as a county improvement program.
So then, I would, uh, like to put it as I did the last time, that this council consider a advisory proposal, or however you wanna, I'm not sure of the language there, but, uh, yeah, an advisory recommendation that we would make a motion and, and vote on and so forth, asking the county to make that a capital improvement project and to do it quickly. And in fact, I would think we might want to, uh, also work with the Redwood City Council and the Belmont Council on the, on the same item, because I would imagine there's a lot of people who live in Redwood Shores that are Redwood City residents, that also traverse that road on their way out to 280 commuting. Uh, there's a lot of people who work in, at Oracle and places like that, in Belmont, and, uh, again, in Redwood Shores, who, you know, maybe they're coming from Sunnyvale, but they're in our cities during the day because they come down Edgewood Road and they go to work. So, to me, it's a, it's a public safety issue, and it, it, you know, it's not too different than the Orville Dam, and the issues that are going on there, and the safety, you know, the, the, uh, place that puts those people, because it's, uh, it was ignored.
I'm sorry.
And so I would like to see this addressed, and I'd like to see it put on the dice.
Uh, would it be appropriate, Mr. Seaman-
Would it be appropriate, Mr. City Manager, that you contact the city managers of Redwood City and Belmont, and is that the next step, or, I mean, or should we be contacting members of the councils that we know, or what do you think is the next appropriate step if we wanted to talk about, if we wanted to do this?
Right. Well, I think the, I think the next step would be for the council to take action.
Okay.
You know, it would make sense to clarify the council's position before you start to try to find partners. And that could either be done by asking the mayor to send a letter, or directing the city manager to send a letter, or doing a resolution. My advice would be one of the first two, have the mayor or the city manager send a letter. Passing a resolution might be perceived by the county as being heavily heavy-handed. You might see the board start passing resolutions about streets in San Carlos that they think should be improved.
I understand. Well, Mr. Growcott, I agree with you, because I travel that thing at least three times, four times a day. I don't know if anyone else is, okay, well, I mean, whether you're traveling, are you willing to talk about this un-agendized item?
Sure. If you want to send a letter, that's fine with me.
Okay. But I think, I think we need, I think we need to talk about it before I send a letter. Or not? Got any specifics?
Well, you want to talk?
Yeah. I think, I do, I don't think this is on the agenda. I think if you want to direct the mayor to send a letter, you ought to agendize that conversation. Probably isn't a very long item.
No.
Okay. Let's see if we can do that.
So the letter would be up before us when we talk about it. The draft of the letter.
Yeah.
It would be a draft, and now it would be an agendized item, we'd approve the draft.
Yeah, the staff will take a crack at a draft, and you guys can modify it and...
Okay. Any other comments?
Nope. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Olbert.
Sorry. Actually, I have a, sort of an odd question for, I guess for Mr. Rubens. I voted in favor of the extending the year-round permit, permit for the year-round farmer's market. I had quite a few doubts in my own mind about which way to go on that, and I've been thinking about it for the rest of the meeting, and I actually think that if I were to vote again, I would not vote in favor of the extension. Is, is that relevant, irrelevant, since I was the deciding vote? Can we bring it back? Or is it, look, sorry, Mark, it's over and done with, we don't do that. I've just never dealt with a situation like this.
Yeah, we're talking about a motion to reconsider something, and I think I'd like to make sure I'm fresh on the rules of how you would do that. If it's, I mean, the agenda setting, I guess at this point would be, can we bring it back for reconsideration? And then I can inform the council of whether or not, under Robert's rules, you can do that, but at least you could talk about it tonight, so if that's the council direction to look at it again, you could. But usually, from a policy standpoint, once a decision's made, like historically, the city council's kind of stuck by it, and since this is an annual permit, you're going to look at it again in the future anyway.
Well, I'm asking a somewhat different question, not what the council's tradition is, but what the rules are, what the statutory environment is.
Yeah, I mean, the, usually, the, the parties who voted in favor of something can bring it back as a reconsideration, so that's, I did, after further thought, that's what the rule is. So, so you could come back, since if you, if the council wants to have it brought back, you can ask that it be brought back, but from our agenda-setting rules, I think it's still the three people to bring something back.
But I don't know that all three have to, I mean, I'm not...
But you'd make a motion, I, I'll just speak on Robert's...
I'm not an expert.
It's, I think it would be, someone would make a motion to reconsider an item and bring it back, and then if it passed, it would come back.
And I'll throw in my take here, and correct me if I'm wrong. Voting in favor of that motion was Cameron...
Wrong.
Ron and Mark.
Right.
So I think, under Robert's rules, Mark could make a motion...
Right.
...to bring it back. And then it would take three of you to re-agendize the item under our current agenda-setting rules.
That would be the process.
Right. But it has to be you, that's the anomaly.
Has to be somebody other than you.
I mean, it could be any of the other two, but you're the person who voted yes, who's suggesting it.
Given the concerns that I alluded to, we'll see what happens. I would make a motion to bring it back. I'd like to see it reconsidered.
Is that appropriate at this time? I mean, at this time?
I don't think it's a motion, I think it's now you're just your...
I think it's your, it's still three votes either way, it's still...
Okay. Under the council's rule, if you're asking for that item, it'd be re-agendized.
Right.
If I may?
Oh, please.
Through the chair. I would have to go back and look at the actual details of it, but I know that on the turf issue that was, you know, drew huge crowds, Ms. Doherty, who was on the council at the time, voted in favor of the proposal that was come, that...
Sorry, we can do this, it's just a matter of if you want to do it, I'm sorry.
I'm just talking about how it was done. Because she voted in the affirmative and changed her mind, similar to what Mr. Olbert is talking about, she had it brought back. And I don't think it took three votes or anything like that, it was just her approaching city staff and saying, I want to, I would like to reconsider my vote. She had to do it within a certain timeframe, but she did it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the law on that, so I...
I wasn't involved in it.
Yeah. And I, I remember it came back, I remember it too, but I don't, I don't know what the rules were for agenda-setting back then, but I, I agree that that's what happened, it was brought back. But I think now we have rules of three of us have to...
Three of you to bring it back, so, I mean, it's the same, same number of people to bring something back as a successful motion.
There's one.
Sorry, let me just interrupt for clarity, because Matt, I appreciate you mentioning that. I would like to, given my concerns, I would like to reserve the right that if staff, upon further research, determines that Inga, Inga, not herself, by herself, whatever the, in other words, if they had a two-person rule back then, which I think was generally the rule, if she brought it back herself, then I would like the same consideration given to me, because that's council practice at that point. And in a sense, it's separate from the agenda-setting process. But I just want to make that mention, make that comment.
So tonight, because we're under council communications now, which is our traditional agenda-setting item, I think that would be the safest approach, with, with due note to your comment, Councilmember Olbert.
Right. So you want two more, two more people want, to, have two...
Yeah, just go to the...
Okay, go ahead. All right, so there's one.
Follow-up on the question.
Two.
Okay, three, all right. As far, I didn't let Dave talk, which now I feel bad, because, no, I know he'll talk, but I feel bad about that, because I, I cut him off, because I thought, well, the votes are there, so that's it, don't have to, you know, don't beat a dead horse. All right. So, I'm sorry, staff, do you have a direction there? All right, one more thing, I just wanted to report back that the SPWMA, which is the Joint Powers of 11 cities and the county relative to our garbage setup, we have received 99% of the money for the fire, which is, I think, over, I don't know, $7 million or $8 million, all reimbursed to us. The only thing that's in advance at the moment is business interruption insurance. We have that also, up to $3 or $4 million, and that's a discussion of how much dollars that's going to be. So in effect, for all intents and purposes, there's no loss to the JPA on this fire. And we're also looking at providing some more fire suppression items that we may get into to even further enhance the safety of what we're doing. Anyone else? And the progress of the new, or should we say, the possible extension with recology is proceeding at its pace, and I think we're going to be seeing that in April or May, I think a report will be coming, I'm sorry, Jay, help me out, April?
This council will hear about it on May 8th.
May 8th. And so, anyway, I just want to let everybody know that it's proceeding along in good order at this point, and we'll see what, what comes out of it. All right. Any other comments or questions? Staff comments on city administrative business?
I'm going to pass this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, meaning adjourned.